Good evening. My name is Marisa Bono, Chief Strategic Officer for VIA Metropolitan Transit. Buenas tardes. O prima estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. Thank you for joining our live interactive telephone town hall as we host an open and timely conversation about VIA's response to the global coronavirus pandemic and our agency's long-term plans as an essential service for San Antonio. This event and others will give us a chance to speak directly with you and answer as many of your questions as possible. We're spending our time this evening explaining what VIA has done and is doing to address the coronavirus here in San Antonio. With me on the call I have Jeff Arnt, President and CEO of VIA, and Tramell Brown, Vice President of Safety, Training, and System Security. Jeff and Tramell, thanks for being here with us this evening.
Very happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. It is a pleasure to be here this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. As I mentioned, this is an interactive forum and we would love to hear from you, the callers, and those of you who are online on Facebook Live or reimagine.com. We will be taking as many questions from participants as we possibly can live on this event. Otra vez, o prima estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. If you have a question, you can press star three on your phone keypad at any time and you will be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you will be live on the call and you will be able to ask your question directly to Jeff or Tramell. If you're streaming the event on our website, you can simply type your name and question below the streaming player. Jeff, before we get into questions here, I'd like to give you a moment to address all of our participants on the call right now before we dive into questions.
Sure. So it is a pleasure to be here this evening and we are fortunate that we are able to share in this way the many things that VIA is doing during this pandemic. I will say this, that we view as very important and perhaps sacred our responsibility to help people make connections that they need to make. And there are a number of essential workers out there that need to be able to get to their job, as well as there are people that need to get to groceries or need to get to medical services. And so we continue to run our service for those people. But we also have a concern for the community and for our employees' health and well-being. And so we have taken a number of steps that I'm sure we will explore as this call goes on in order to help protect the bus operators, protect customer service people, protect our police officers, and protect our customers.
Thanks for that, Jeff. And certainly our thoughts are with those who are being affected by this unprecedented event. We're especially proud of our VIA family and so grateful to VIA bus and van operators, our maintenance crews, our transit center support, and of course, our safety and security teams who really are on the front line daily to keep us moving. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and move into our first question. And the question is from Brandon Droff, who's joining us online, and he asks, "How is VIA protecting its frontline workers such as drivers, customer service, and police officers from encountering the virus?" Great question, Brandon. Jeff or Tramell, would you like to take that one?
So Brandon, I'm going to start and then I will punt to Tramell. And the reason I'd like to start is because there's one step we've taken that I think is perhaps appeared to be confusing to the public, and that is that we are not collecting money at the fare box. And I understand that in traditional times, that going without a fare is typically used in order to try and increase ridership, just like providing anything free is expected to increase its usage. But that is not at all the intent of what we're doing at the fare box during these times. So the fare box, when you enter the bus, every passenger interfaces with that fare box. They touch the fare box. They have money that they put through the fare box. They're standing within a very short distance of the bus operator and they're bunched behind each other waiting to pay the fare. So the reason that we are not collecting the fares right now is people can bypass the fare box, not touch the fare box, that have been touched by all the other passengers who boarded before they got on, not stand in front of that bus operator for an extended period of time. So the entire intent of the going without fares is to make it safer for the employees and for the customers. And I would note that I was reading earlier where there were interviews of passengers who felt that being on the bus was as safe as being anywhere else right now. So Tramell, who is our Vice President for Safety and Security and Police, Tramell will now cover, I think, a number of steps that we've taken. Tramell's kind of our point of contact, our key man, if you will, in this response. And so Tramell, if you would kind of describe some of the many things that we are doing to keep our customers and our employees safe.
Sure. Thank you, Jeff. And that's a great question, by the way. As Jeff had mentioned, that the free fares, it gives us an opportunity to reduce the dwell time and allow our customers just to come on a board and take a seat. Some of the measures that we've put in place just to ensure the safety of the operators that you asked about is, for one example, is each operator provided hand sanitizer. Prior to pulling out, they have the opportunity to get another portion that they can use throughout the day for their use. Gloves are also provided and they are optional based on the operator's preference for the service that they're doing. The operators also get sanitizer wipes, so they can wipe down and sanitize the operator compartment area with the steering wheel and the other areas that they deal with and touch on a regular basis. Masks are also optional for our operators. That also goes along in accordance with some other measures that have been done inside of the vehicle, not just for the frontline employee but for the customers. And part of that is the high-touch area cleaning that Jeff had alluded to before and the removal of seats behind the operator to enhance social distancing, but it also creates a better social distancing for them for our customers as they take their trips down the road. In addition to that, there's a lot of education that's going on and we're continuously looking at ways to improve, new ways to make a safer service for not only our service providers but our customers as well.
Thank you, Tramell. And again, all, this is an interactive forum. We want to hear your questions. O prima estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. If you have a question, you can press star three now on your keypad at any time to get in the queue and ask a question. Our staff is collecting your questions. We're going to answer as many as we can during this live event. Again, press star three if you have a question. And if you're participating online, you can submit your question below the streaming player. And I'm going to go to our first live caller now. Will has a question about how VIA plans to react to the, looks like maybe what's our community post-crisis. So Will, go ahead. You're live now.
Well, first of all, thank you all so much for doing this. Really appreciate the information. What are VIA's plans regarding the downturn in the economy, sales tax revenue, and suspended fares?
Thanks for that call. Jeff, would you like to handle that one?
Oh, I'd be delighted to handle that one. It's a very complex question and I probably can only talk about the tip of the iceberg because we don't know how long this is going to go, how deep it's going to go. But I would say I see two primary impacts. So first of all, Will, clearly you understand VIA's funding. We are not collecting fares right now. That generates, fares typically generate about 1.8 million a month, but probably more significantly, 75% of the revenue that funds our system is sales tax revenue. And while we don't know exactly what the impact on sales tax revenue is going to be, we know that there will be a substantial impact on sales tax. And at the same time that those revenue streams are going down, we will see that we'll have some added expenses associated with the added cleaning of the buses and a number of other things. And so we did kind of a, you know, any projection we do today is just that and tomorrow, other information will be out there and we'll fine tune it. But our initial projection indicated that we would probably be down a net of 33% of our operating budget when you combine the loss of revenue and the increase in expense. And if nothing else happened with a 33% reduction in your funding or your budget, clearly you're going to have to take some very strong steps to bring it back in budget. However, the CARES Act that was passed last week by Congress included provisions to help shore up public transit agencies across America. And by the end of the week, we should have a pretty good idea of what kind of funding we will get out of the CARES Act. But I think that will greatly, greatly, greatly help minimize or reduce the impact of that loss of revenue. In fact, it's designed to help accommodate that. So that's the first economic impact. And the second, I think, is on the community. And as Marisa said, as we recover, you know, you can see that as we recover, people will still need to make their connections, et cetera. And I probably, you probably also can see that there'll probably be people who have been laid off and not been able to earn wages that are going to be in a position, difficult position with respect to owning and maintaining a car. And public transportation is a very economical way for people to get around. So it's going to provide an opportunity for those people that have not been able to keep their cars or cannot continue to operate their cars for some period of time to make those connections to get back to work, and that's what's most important. So we will be, today, of course, we are an important connection for many in the community. About 55 to 60% of the people who normally ride the bus still are riding the bus. But after all of this, I think there'll be a market of people that will find the economics of riding public transportation will serve them well as we come into a recovery period.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Jeff. Yes, VIA certainly is a critical part of any recovery effort to get people to where they want to go. And I actually just saw a big, almost 400 to 500 people have joined us over the last five minutes. Thank you, everyone, for joining our live interactive telephone town hall this evening. We're hosting an open and timely conversation about VIA's response to the COVID-19 pandemic in San Antonio. This is a chance for you to speak with us directly and answer as many questions as we can about what we're doing to support the community during this time. And if you have a question, press star three on your keypad at any time to get your question in the queue. If you're participating online, you can submit your question below the streaming player. And while we're getting those callers' questions in, we're going to go ahead and turn now to a quick poll question. So if you're on the phone, you can vote by pressing the corresponding number on your keypad. If you're online, you can vote by selecting your response below the streaming player. And the first question is, "What kind of information would be most beneficial for you during the coronavirus pandemic?" Press one for efforts to mitigate coronavirus in the transit system. Two, if you're interested, most interested in service information, so things like schedules, changes in service, et cetera. Press three for VIA's short and long-term efforts to maintain a robust transportation system after the crisis has passed. And press four for information on what VIA will look like when the stay-home, stay-safe order is lifted. Again, one for our efforts to mitigate the virus. Press two for service information, schedules, changes in service. Three for our efforts to maintain a robust system post-recovery. And four for information on what VIA will look like when the stay-home, stay-safe order is lifted. So as we're tallying up those poll results, I'm going to go ahead and take a question here from the queue. And the first question is from Tanika Johnson, and she has a question about sanitation on the buses and protection for our passengers. So Tanika, go ahead. You're live.
Yes, ma'am. So for the trans riders, I know you said the operators have wipes and, you know, things to sanitize with. However, as a rider, the buses I can see are not clearly, the vans, I'm sorry, they're not clean, the seat belts are not clean, and sometimes we're asked to buckle ourselves in. So what measures are being taken to protect the riders?
Thank you for that question, Tanika. Tramell, would you like to handle that one?
Sure. And thanks for the question, Ms. Johnson. One of the things that's been going on since this pandemic has taken place is we've got clean teams that clean high-touch areas inside the vehicles. And you have mentioned that you've heard a lot about the bus, but as far as perichord of vehicles goes, they are disinfected every night, just like our buses are, and they're also sanitized midday throughout their route. So when they come back during the split, they also sanitize from top to bottom. But you bring up the seat belts as an example. As we've now increased more of the people that are out there in the field doing infield sanitizing of high-touch areas, we're always looking for new areas to take feedback on so we can look at ways to apply that and work on that. And that subject actually came up this weekend and there's an effort to go to make sure that we're making sure the customer feels that their best interest is taken care of. And so when you see the clean teams out there, by all means, please remind them that there's some concern that you have and they'll be glad to assist you with that.
Thank you for that, Jeff. Did you have anything to add there?
Only that I know that there are VIA trans operators and they, of course, have wipes and that I know that VIA trans operators will go through and wipe down seat belts. That's part of a procedure now. So that's another way that we're trying to safeguard within the VIA trans area.
Thank you. And we had a poll question before that caller asked her question about safety for passengers. And our question was, "What kind of information from VIA would be most beneficial for you during the coronavirus pandemic?" And 31% of our participants said they're most interested in hearing about VIA's efforts to mitigate the coronavirus in the transit system. About 23% of our callers said they're interested in service information, service changes, schedule changes, et cetera. About 23% of our participants said they're interested in our long-term efforts to maintain a robust system post-recovery. And 23% said they are interested in information on what VIA is going to look like when the stay-home, stay-safe order is lifted. Again, for those of you who just joined us, this is an interactive forum. We want to hear your questions. Give us your questions. If you have one, press star three at any time. A member of our staff is screening calls. And if you're streaming the event on our website, you can simply type your name and question below the streaming player. And I see here I have a question from John on Facebook Live. And John asks, "What's going on with the Saturday schedule? Why and how?" Question mark. Jeff, would you, assuming they're talking about some recent service changes that we've had, would you like to tell our participants about that?
Sure. So beginning next Monday on April 6th, Monday through Friday, service we will run on a Saturday schedule. We obviously will also run Saturday on the Saturday schedule and we'll run Sunday on the Sunday schedule. So all routes will operate on their regular Saturday schedule with the following exceptions. Express routes that normally don't run on Saturday at all, 6, 7, and 48, they will run on adjusted schedule. So we'll still maintain those services. There are a few routes that will not operate at all during this period, the 16 and the 65, because they serve Joint Base San Antonio. We have restrictions right now as far as access and so people can't use the bus. And then our Viva routes, 1140 and 301, will not operate because we have other routes that cover all of those areas. And the Viva routes were specifically designed to serve destinations like the museums, which are not open now, restaurants which are not open now. So the Viva routes will be suspended Monday, or Sunday through Saturday during this period of time. And the reason we're doing it is that right now, our ridership is about, as I said before, about 55% down. And when we move to a Saturday, we're calling it the Saturday plus schedule, we'll reduce service about 30%. So we're still going to be able to maintain that social spacing that we were maintaining by running the higher level of service without running up the expenses of running a much more service than what the ridership would merit. I will tell you that in the state of Texas, Dart and San Antonio are the last two major transit properties that go to Saturday schedule. Austin went several weeks ago. Houston went, I believe, a week ago. We've maintained the higher level of service to encourage the social distancing, but we knew that when the ridership dropped to a certain level that we could maintain social distancing while still having fewer vehicles out on the road.
Thanks for that, Jeff. I'm going to go ahead and go to a live caller now. And we have Jeff from, let's see, north central San Antonio, and he wants to know how VIA, he has a question about our social distancing policy. Jeff, go ahead. You're live now.
How does VIA accomplish the six-foot social distancing policy that's recommended by the government? And when I was previewed with this question previously, I didn't hear the question that Jeff, or the response that Jeff had had on the social distancing. So you may have answered that already. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jeff, would you like to take that one?
I certainly can start and then Tramell may want to add. So first of all, we have to rely to some extent upon the customers that are on the vehicle themselves to maintain that spacing. What we have done to ensure the operator spacing is maintained is, as I said before, we've stopped collecting fares so people pass by more quickly. We've taken out a few seats in the front. We've restricted the seats in the very front for elderly and disabled people and we have the sites for wheelchairs. So that puts some distance there. But we really, really have to rely on the passengers to maintain that spacing. The way that we kind of encouraged that or made that possible was by running about twice as much service as the passengers really would have demanded at that time. So the number of people on each bus dropped by about 50%, which gave you more room and more opportunity to do that. Also, in the transit centers, for example, where you do have people gathering, we have security guards at the transit centers and if they see congregations, they will go over and politely ask people to spread out. And most of the time, people want to spread out, they just have kind of forgotten that they've gotten closer than six foot. So those are a couple of things that we are doing to encourage social spacing.
And what I could also add to that, Jeff, and thank you. The customers that are riding the buses are really doing a great job of following the leadership and guides, not only from the local, state, and federal health officials, but also our local civic leaders. And they're actually doing fairly well policing themselves once they get inside the vehicle. People are spreading out, they're finding available seating, they're holding onto handrails and still making their daily connections. And that's also part of why we've increased our high-touch area cleaning throughout the service at Park and Rise in Olson Hills, because we know our customers are holding onto handrails and choosing seat options, they may not have done before prior to the strikes.
Thanks, Tramell. And I'm seeing a lot of questions here about driver safety. I know you covered this briefly at the beginning of the call, but we've had hundreds of participants join us since. So can you do a quick overview for us as well on what VIA is doing to protect our drivers?
I sure can. Thank you, Marisa. So as mentioned before, there's some, especially for those that have just recently logged in, I'll cover this again. Our operators are doing a great job and they enjoy the work that they do as well as the people that they transport. And so some of the things that are, provisions that are in place for the men and women that get our community to their connections are gloves. Gloves are made available to operators and they're optional. Hand sanitizer is also something operators receive before they pull out. They have their own amount that they use and they can get those from the, what we call the station form or their supervisor that helps them start each day. The operators also are given sanitizing wipes for the operator compartment area to wipe down the steering wheel and areas that they touch frequently. Masks are also optional and they have the ability to wear their own mask if they feel inclined to do so. The free fare that's going on right now has a lot of benefits and one of those is also it decreases the dwell time at the fare box. So it allows our customers to just simply board and take a seat and no need to stand there and go through the fare, do a fare transaction for that operator. As mentioned just slightly before, we also have cleaning teams that are out there that clean high-touch areas like the fare box, the rails, and handrails. And those are also things that our customers and the operators go through. One thing I'd like to add to my previous mention was, there's also the drive-up testing facility where operators are included along with first responders and healthcare providers in a drive-up testing where it's a doctor referral based at Joe Freeman. And it's a feature in the many that we're happy to see in place for our operators and our many women that provide that service.
Thanks so much for that. And I'm going to go ahead and get, we have some new callers on the line. So again, if you want to ask a question, press star three. Or if you're participating online, put your question with your name below the streaming player so that we can get that from you. And I'm going to go into our next poll question here. And the question is, "How are you getting the most news about what VIA is doing during the COVID-19 crisis?" Press one for television, two for social media, three for the newspaper and online news sites, and four for the VIA website. Again, question is, "How are you getting the most news about what VIA is doing during the COVID-19 crisis?" One for TV, two for social media, three for the newspaper and online news sites, and four for the VIA website. And while we tally those off, while we tally those up, we're going to go ahead and go to another live caller at this point. And I have a question from Mark about the free fare period. Mark, go ahead. You're on live.
Thank you, ma'am. So my question is just asking about the free fare period during this pandemic and how long it's planned to last. I know the initial date was April the 1st, but I wanted to know if it was going to be extended and if so, for how long? Thank you for allowing me to ask this question.
Thank you for that. Jeff, you want to handle that one?
Well, Mark, thank you for the question because it's important for us to be able to make people aware that we have already extended that period. We originally were going through April 1st and it was a relatively short period, but of course, we didn't know where things were going. And we also wanted to deal with or identify if there were any unintended consequences. Gratefully, happily, there weren't. And so we have extended that, extended the free fare period through the end of April. Now, obviously, as things roll along during the month of April, we may be looking at a further extension depending upon what the circumstances are. But as I mentioned earlier, the whole point of the free fare is to try and keep the customers and the operator safe and well. And so as long as there's continuing need along those lines, I think you can be pretty confident that our board will continue to support free fare.
Thank you for that, Jeff. And I have the results from our second poll question. The question was, "How are you getting the most news about what VIA is doing during the COVID-19 crisis?" 52% of our attendees said television, 17% said radio, 16% said social media, 15% said the VIA website, and 0% said VIA transit centers. So thank you for participating in that poll. It's really important for us to know how you're getting your information so that we can stay in close contact with you during this time. And I'm going to go ahead and go back to our live callers. And I am looking for, oh, looks like our next caller who was queued up has exited the call. So I'll go to our next live caller. And I have a question from Janice on the east side, and she has a question about requirements for passengers on the bus during this COVID crisis period. Janice, go ahead. You're live.
Hello. Yeah, I'm just concerned, are we going to be allowed to wear masks, face masks?
Okay. If I understand your question, Janice, you're asking if passengers are allowed to wear face masks?
Yes, we apply.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. All right. I'm going to hand your question over to Jeff, our president and CEO. Jeff, go ahead.
Absolutely. In fact, our operators are allowed to wear face masks as well, but certainly, we would not preclude anybody from using the system if they wanted to wear a face mask.
Thank you for that. And I have a question from Brandon on Facebook Live, and he's asking, "From a business standpoint, how does the COVID-19 pandemic affect the way VIA operates in the upcoming fiscal year?" how does the COVID-19 pandemic affect the way Via operates in the upcoming fiscal year?" Jeff or Tramell, any thoughts on that?
Sure, I have a lot of thoughts on that. So we'll start out and I kind of review some of the information I provided early on. So we know that we're going to have a hit to the sales tax, and 75% of our income is through the sales tax. In fact, that's the primary source of income. We don't get any funding from the state. We get about 12% of our budget from the federal government, and then we have passenger fares. So the big chunk of our funding is sales tax. And we know that sales tax revenues are going to go down. We also know that we have additional expenses associated with many of the activities we've described. For example, you know, all the extra people that are out in the field cleaning, cleaning the buses and cleaning the vans. So we know that we have those two challenges. But we also know that the federal government, through the CARES Act that was passed last Friday, has allocated, I think like $25 billion to the transit industry across the country. Now, of course, New York is the big one, and New York has a very high need now. So everything gets allocated to a formula based upon your size, number of people, number of vehicles, all those things. When we get those dollars, we'll have a sense of what the overall impact to our budget ultimately will be. Right now, excuse me, right now, we have most of our staff working from home if they are at all able to do that. Our van operators that are not driving vans are being used to help clean the additional vehicles. So we're making use of that manpower that way. And we're working with a couple other public-type organizations to assist them. And I think over the next week or so, you'll hear about some of the assistance that Via is providing. That's not traditional transit assistance, but it's transportation-type assistance. So what we're looking at right now is holding back on expenses, cutting back on that which we can cut back so we can reduce the impact of the lower revenue. But we know that we can't cut back a large extent and reduce that. And we also know that we perhaps won't have to do that with this federal funding. So it's kind of a day-to-day thing. It certainly could impact the coming fiscal year depending upon how fast the recovery is, for example. But for the rest of the calendar year, we believe that the backstop that was provided through the CARES Act is really going to help us sustain ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Jeff. I'm going to go back to our live callers now, and I have a question here from Sandra on the northeast side. She is a senior citizen, and she has questions about assistance during this time on the bus. Sandra, go ahead. You are live.
Hi, this is Sandra. And I have cancer. And with my treatments that I get, I have what they call a fog brain. So pretty soon, I will not be able to drive. So I'm going to have to rely on the bus to get me to and from. And I was wondering, in the future, are they going to have someone on the bus to help you get up on the bus, the steps that you have to go up on the bus to get in the bus, and someone to help you to get down on the bus? That's my first question. And then my second question is, when you're at the different places to catch the bus, the bus stops, will you be adding a little bit more protection there as far as from the weather elements so that one does not get wet or get cold when it's raining and blowing, or it's very hot? Will you be giving us a little bit more protection at the bus stops, having little, you know, shelters that one can protect themselves against the weather? And then my third question was, the buses bringing you, dropping you up closer to some of the sites that you need to go to? For instance, if you need to go to the doctor, bringing you, going into some of those busy side streets where the doctors actually are at and not leaving you way at the end of a corner, and you have to walk all that distance, for instance?
Sandra, thank you so much. Sorry to cut you off there. We have a lot of callers on the line here, and we have a few questions for Jeff to address. A lot of concerns about connectivity for our seniors and folks who are handicapped and folks who are trying to get to their healthcare appointments. So great questions. Thank you. Jeff, would you like to handle some of those?
Oh, absolutely. So first of all, I wish you well in your treatment. I first of all would say that the fixed route bus system is very accessible. So with respect to climbing stairs to get on the bus, we have a ramp. And the ramp will, the stairs will become a ramp, if you will, or the step up will become a ramp, so that it's easy to get on and off the bus. The buses also have lifts that are originally designed primarily for wheelchair users. But non-wheelchair users can use those lifts if we can get them on the bus safely. So that should be helpful that way. The other thing is, we have Via Trans service, and that is a non-fixed route service. It's not running on a regular schedule down the street. But especially if your condition would be such that you were weakened and had difficulty getting to and from a bus stop, and you mentioned how oftentimes the doctor's offices are on side streets. If you were in a weakened condition, or if your cognitive abilities, if you became easily confused about where you were, you could qualify for Via Trans. And in Via Trans, that's more of a curb-to-curb service where you would pre-reserve the time of the trip. And if you had regular treatments, could maybe even get on a subscription. And then you would be picked up at the curb side, and you would be dropped at the curb side where your doctor's office was if it was down that side street. It's difficult for the buses to do that. Oftentimes, buses can't maneuver on those side streets. But the Via Trans vehicles are smaller and are far more maneuverable.
Okay, thank you so much for that, Jeff. I have a question from Anna on Facebook Live here, and she wants to know, "Is Via trying to increase ridership with free fares?" I know you want to respond to that one, Jeff.
Oh, I can give a short response. No. But I understand the question, because as I said before, oftentimes transit properties will introduce a free fare on a new service to get people to try it out, or just as any other promotion, free fare promotion in other businesses. Typically designed to increase utilization. But the reason we put the free fare in was to protect the safety of the passengers and of the operator by not requiring everyone to stop right there at the operator's face and have to deal with this fare box, everybody touching the fare box. It would be a very high-touch point. And so it was really strictly a passenger and driver safety issue that led us to introducing free fares. Now, I said earlier that we did it for a fairly short time to make sure there were not unintended consequences, among which could have been that despite all the requests from public health officials, the mayor, the judge, on up, despite those requests that we not venture out, that we knew there was a possibility that we would have that kind of reaction. And so we only implemented free fare for a short period to make sure that we didn't see that, what we would call unintended consequence. And in fact, what we saw after the introduction of the free fare was that ridership continued going down, down, down. So it was fairly apparent that this was not encouraging people to go out and travel and ride around. But on the other hand, it was providing a safer environment for those essential workers and those people that needed to get to the doctor and needed to get their groceries. It provided a safer environment and a safer method of operating for them and for their driver.
Thank you for that, Jeff. And just a reminder to everyone, this is an interactive forum. We want to hear your questions. If you have a question, press star three on your keypad at any time to get in the queue. And if you're participating online, you can submit your question below the streaming player. We are going to answer as many questions as we can tonight. We have almost 2,000 people with us this evening, so we may, we're probably not going to be able to get to everyone, but we're going to get as many done as we can tonight, and then we'll be following up afterwards. And I'm going to turn now to our next poll question. You can participate on the poll through your keypad, your touchpad. And the question is, "Have you used Via during the COVID-19 crisis?" Have you used Via during the COVID-19 crisis? Press one if you use Via daily. Press two if you use Via at least once a week. Press three if you haven't ridden Via since the pandemic spread to San Antonio. And press four if you aren't a Via rider in normal times. So again, one if you use Via daily, two if you use Via at least once a week, three if you haven't ridden since the pandemic spread to San Antonio, and press four if you aren't a Via rider in normal times. And while we tally up those poll questions, Jeff, I'm noticing that we're getting a lot of questions and comments from our disabled riders, the disabled community. Could you tell our callers how they can access Via Trans, both online and by calling in?
So the best way to access Via Trans is to go to our website, viainfo.net. And the process is, first of all, if you're not currently registered, there's a fairly simple registration process that gets you into the system. And then what you do is pre-reserve trips, that you have to pre-reserve trips at least a day in advance. And you will be given a pickup time, and the van will pick you up within a certain interval of that time. That time is kind of an estimate. As you can imagine, many things can happen during the day on that route. But they will pick you up at your home or wherever it is you, if you're at your office, at your doctor's office, and they will take you to the second location. Now, during this time, during this time of pandemic, we are limiting each van to one passenger. So you're not going to have to be concerned that the van will become crowded and you would be exposed in any way to what other passengers might bring with them. So that's an added safety feature that we're, we are reducing the number of passengers we allow on a van at any time to one. So you would therefore get a direct trip to your destination, and it would take you to that destination to the curb side. Now, the other thing we have is our VOS system, Via Trans online system. And that is a system where, again, you can sign on, but you have kind of control. You book your trip. You ask for the schedule. It will give you options back. You can cancel a trip if you need to on that line. And maybe most importantly, because as I said before, the time we give you is an estimated time. It's not an exact time of when that vehicle will arrive. You'll be able, on the VOS system, you are able from within an hour before your scheduled pickup time to begin watching where that vehicle is and tracking that vehicle so that you can be available for it when it arrives, but you don't have to be out curb side for a long period of time. And so I think it's, there's a lot of information there, I understand. So again, I think the best way to get the information is viainfo.net, because it will outline all of that. You'll probably be able to follow it better than perhaps I was able to explain it.
Well, thanks for that, Jeff. And just to be clear, because I know we had a question from Tony on the deep west side, Via Trans, he was concerned about social distancing in the Via Trans vehicles. And you, I think you just made clear that during this time period, there only one passenger will be in those vehicles, correct?
And yes, that is absolutely correct. And then we took the additional, we made additional effort, which is the seat closest to the operator itself is not available, so that we're protecting that social distancing for the driver as well. Yes, only one passenger and the driver.
Great, thank you for that. And I have the results from our third poll question. The question was, "Have you used Via during the COVID-19 crisis?" And 6% of our callers today say they're still using Via daily. 11% of our participants say they're still using Via at least once a week or more. 45% say they haven't ridden Via since the pandemic spread to San Antonio. And then 38% of our callers are saying they aren't Via riders in normal times. So thank you for joining our call, those participants who aren't typically Via riders but are concerned about how we at Via are handling the COVID crisis during these times. And this information is helpful for us. We want to better understand what's going on for our riders. Jeff, have we seen a decrease in ridership during this time period?
Oh, absolutely. Maybe two weeks ago, Monday, two weeks ago today, our ridership was down about 15%. So we were carrying 85% of our normal daily ridership. But if you look today, we were closer to 55%. So we've had, we've gone from 15% down to about 45% down over a two-week period. It looks to me as though that steady decline in ridership is kind of starting to flatten out, and I would imagine that's because the essential workers that are using the system are using the system on a daily basis and would continue using the system. On the Via Trans side, we've seen a far deeper cut, and that is driven by the fact that many of the workshops and daycare centers have closed now. And so people that had oftentimes five-days-a-week trips are no longer needing to make those trips. And that's, of course, enabled us to take some of the Via Trans drivers and use them to enhance the cleanliness of the system.
Thank you for that. And just a reminder to everyone who's listening in, this is an interactive forum. We're encouraging your questions. We want your questions. If you have one, press star three on your keypad at any time to get in the queue. And if you're participating online, you can submit your question below the streaming player. And I'm going to go live now to Michael, who is calling us from South Presa. Michael has a question about our free fare program. Go ahead, Michael. You're live.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for doing this. Since there are going to be many new riders, as Jeff was mentioning earlier, I was wondering if it might be an opportunity for Via to introduce people who might not be familiar with public transit to how easy and convenient it is? If there was some program or something you could do to introduce that to new riders?
What are your thoughts on that, Jeff? And maybe Tramell, if you could maybe chime in on any thoughts related to safety about promoting riders during this time?
Well, right now, I think we're not highly promoting riders. As I said before, we didn't do free fares to promote riders. But I believe as we come into the recovery period, and I believe to a great extent that is what the question's about, as we come into the recovery period and we have people who perhaps used to have a car and no longer have a car available, then we're going, we are going to have the opportunity to help people learn how to use public transportation. It's far easier than learning to drive a car, but we all have learned to drive a car. And so we've been, actually, we've developed online a number of kind of lessons in riding public transportation, kind of 101 lessons in public transportation. And that's, I think, going to be a very valuable tool, because video certainly is a great teacher. But I'm going to take a look at exactly what we have and see how we might enhance that, because that really is an important factor and an important opportunity for the community and for Via. So thank you for kind of sparking that further interest and suggestion.
That's a great question. And Jeff, I'm seeing a lot of questions here about service changes. Do you want to address that quickly? It's probably, I don't think I'll be able to go live with all of these callers in the short time we have left.
Sure. All right. So beginning next Monday, the system will primarily operate on Saturday schedule. So whatever, if you're riding Route 3, you'll be on the Saturday schedule. There are a few exceptions. There are some express routes that normally don't run on Saturday, so they'll run a modified weekday, and those express routes are 6, 7, and 48. Then we have a couple routes that only serve joint-based San Antonio. Restrictions at the base preclude people from riding that service, and so we won't be running that. And then the three Viva routes, 1140 and 301, will not operate at all during the remainder of this period, mostly because those were designed to serve specific destinations, and those destinations are no longer open. Clearly, as those destinations reopen, we would be re-implementing those services. The other thing, and I failed to mention this before because it goes to the social spacing issue, is that we will, we've also identified those routes that have the potential, based upon what we see in ridership today, have the potential to need a little bit better service than what the Saturday schedule does. And so we are going to have what we call spacer buses, and we will insert those into those routes, so there would be higher-than-Saturday frequency on some of those routes. And again, the reason- And again, the reason for that is because we want to provide everyone the opportunity to space themselves out on the bus.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for that question. And I think it's time for our final poll question for the evening. The question is, how would you move around the city if VIA were not in service? Press one if you would use rideshare, such as Uber or Lyft. Press two if you would walk or bike. Three if you would stay at home and not go to work, doctor shopping, et cetera. So again, question is how, oh, I'm sorry, of course, four is if you would find rides through friends or family members or use a personal vehicle. Okay, one, the question is, how would you move around the city if VIA were not in service? One, if you would use rideshare, such as Uber or Lyft. Two, if you would walk or bike. Three, if you would stay at home and not go to work, doctor shopping, et cetera. And press four, if you would use a personal vehicle or find rides with friends. Okay, while we tally those up, we had a question from Sarah on Facebook Live, and she wanted to know, Jeff, why does it take two hours to take the bus?
Why does it take two hours to take the bus?
I guess we're, it takes her a while.
Okay, and I'm sure there's probably a transfer involved in that because we don't have any routes that operate in less than hourly, but I understand that about half of our passengers actually make a transfer. So depending upon how that transfer works, it adds the time. And so the frequency issue, this goes, so I'm kind of going to move us into the future and into the past as opposed to our present where we're reducing frequency. We know that frequency is probably the key factor in making public transportation services attractive. All the surveys of people across the country for decades have shown that unless a service is frequent, that there are larger and larger numbers of people, as that frequency becomes less and less, who are not interested in pursuing the service. We, with the assistance of the city of San Antonio, implemented some increased frequency on about eighteen routes, and we saw a tremendous ridership increase. So yes, clearly, frequency is going to be important, and as we recover, frequency is going to be important again. And it certainly is part of our short-term, midterm, and long-term, long-range plan to increase frequency throughout the system. And while I'm just mentioning transfers, I would remind everyone that beginning in September, we eliminated the fee for transfers. And so now, your basic bus fare includes your transfer for no upcharge.
Great, thanks for that, Jeff. And for those who are interested in what our plans for the future are post-COVID, go to via reimagine.com, and you can learn more about how we, we're hopeful that we'll be able to increase frequency in our system. I have the results from our final poll question. The question was, how would you move around the city if VIA were not in service? Seven percent of our participants said they would use rideshare, eight percent said they would walk or bike, and twenty percent said they would stay at home completely, and sixty-five percent said they would find rides or use personal vehicles. And it's, again, good information for us. Thank you for participating today. And unfortunately, we're coming to the end of our live event this evening. Thank you for taking the time to join us for this important conversation. We truly appreciate the opportunity to speak to you directly with you and answer your questions. Did you want to offer some closing thoughts, Jeff?
Well, my first thought is that I'm disappointed that Tremel didn't get more questions and earn his keep, although he's been very much earning his keep over the last several weeks. But I want to thank all of you for calling in. I want to remind everyone what I opened with, which is that we view connecting people to where they need to get as our sacred responsibility to our community. And as long as there is a need for that and it can be done with safety, we will continue to do that. And at the same time, we also recognize, especially right now, that there is a large public health issue out there, and we need to take steps in the way we deliver that service to protect the health and well-being of our operators, our other personnel, and our customers. So we're always balancing those two things. But most of all, we recognize that we need to get you there, and you can rely on us to do that.
Thank you for that, Jeff. And again, if we weren't able to get to your question this evening, you can leave a voicemail after the event by staying on the call, and you'll be transferred into our private voicemail system. You can also send us an email at reimagine@viainfo.net or call our office at 210-517-4715. We will be hosting more of these events in the future to keep you involved. And again, you know, we've been saying at VIA, we love to say it, no other city rallies like San Antonio. At a time when we need to be physically farther apart, our city pulls together to look after one another. At VIA, we rally to keep our city moving, to get our essential employees to where they need to be, and we'll continue to be laser-focused on that mission. And we thank everyone for joining us tonight, and we'll look forward to hearing from you at our next event. Thank you again, and have a great evening.